Discussion and possible action on setting a date for a referendum vote on the repeal of the town council's resolution of August 9, 2011 approving lease agreements of the parking lots at 2-26 North Main Street, 36-40 North Main Street, 60 North Main Street, and 48-50 North Main Street as requested by Councilor Akonopolis. We do have correspondence from the town clerk. Dear Chairman Parisi, pursuant to the Town Charter, Chapter 3, Section 9, I hereby certify that a sufficient number of qualified signatures have signed a petition for the repeal of the town council's resolution on August 9, 2011 approving lease agreements of the parking lots at those addresses. The required number of signatures is 2,491, and the petitioners obtained 2,634 signatures. Pursuant to Chapter 3, Section 9, the town council has 30 days to repeal its action of August 9, 2011. If the matter is not repealed by the council, I propose that the election in accordance with the Town Charter and state laws be scheduled for November 14, 2011. Pursuant to state law, the referendum cannot be placed on the ballot for November 8, 2011. Connecticut general statutes 9-370 prohibits the question from being added to the ballot within 60 days of the election. Attached is the proposed question for the November 14 referendum, which has been approved by the town attorney. I'll read the resolution should the town council's resolution on August 9, 2011 approving lease agreements of the parking lots at 2-26, 36-40, 60, and 48-50 North Main Street be repealed.
Okay. Thank you.
What -- who was that from, Counselor? You just read there. What page was that on our?
It came in the pack of --
I thought it came in your packet.
I know. I was trying to see what --
It says additions to items 10 and 11. I believe that's in Sandy's handwriting.
You would have received it through an email on Monday.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to set the date of November 8, which is Election Day anyway, for a referendum vote on the repeal of the resolution of August 9, 2011, lease agreements.
Second.
I think it's -- that date is not a --
No, that's not true. No, that's not true. It just says it can't be on the -- it just says it can't be on the ballot, so it can't be done in the same -- it can't be done in the same room. It can be done 75 feet away at the same polling places so that our -- so that the general public can make one trip, go into Room A and -- or wherever you have set for your ballots, and then move 75 feet to another room for the referendum. One shop -- one-stop shopping, so to speak. Mr. Miller.
You're -- there's an inherent problem with that because you only have -- you have to have telephone lines into the space that you are holding the election. You must have them, okay? The only places that we have election lines are the places where we are actually holding the election, and they're used for the local election right now. So you couldn't have a separate election in that same room. That would be -- first of all, you'd almost be doubling the cost of your election, which is -- if you look at the normal cost of an election is $42,000 plus the cost of ballots. So you'd have to do that virtually almost twice.
Why would you do that?
You have to have separate employees. You have to have separate staffing completely. It's almost impossible.
You could still have it the same day, but not at all -- how many sites do you have? Nine?
We have nine.
Nine. So we could still have it the same day with five sites.
Now, you would confuse the voters to no end if you started sending five -- even with five places, trying to send them to one place for their regular election and then another place to vote for the referendum.
All right. Can you have absentee ballots for referendum voting, Town Clerk?
Yes, we do.
Yes. Actually, Mr. Miller, do you have enough voting machines to do two elections on one day?
No, I do not.
I didn't think so. Yes, you do.
You need voting machines for the referendum?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Are you required to -- you can't have a ballot box?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Let's not talk out loud. If you have something to say, come up near to the front end to the microphone, okay? And you'll be recognized when we're finished. But let's not start yelling out, please, okay? All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
I just -- I just think that it's a shame that we're going to ask the people to come out twice. There are quite a few -- there are quite a few people that, you know, have to be driven to the -- to vote. There are quite a few people that have to get out, and to get them out two weeks in a row is going to be tough. My goal is to get it as easy as possible to vote, not as difficult as possible to vote, and I would like to hear your idea of how we can make this the easiest way. Mr. Miller.
The only way that -- the easiest way, obviously, would have been to have it on the ballot for the regular election. State statute prohibits that from happening, so now it has to be done as a separate election. Has to be. There's no if, ands, or buts about that.
And that's because of the 75-foot away. We can't man the things with telephone lines, and we don't have enough ballot machines. Basically, that's it?
I don't -- you know, if -- when I set up for the regular election, there are nine machines plus a absentee ballot machine. I have to have spares for all of those. Technically, I have to. What I am proposing to do is limit the amount of spares to what I consider bare minimum, which leaves me three spare machines. Now, three spare machines could be used for the referendum. I do not feel comfortable using all three machines for the referendum. I think we ought to have at least one spare in case something happens to one of the machines so that that machine can be replaced at the referendum.
So you mean if we did it the same day?
Absolutely. The others have to be sealed for that purpose. You can't do them for anything else.
Oh, I understand. So if we wanted it the same day, that would be your best solution? Three machines, two real polling places, and one as a backup?
Two, yes.
And one as a backup?
And then you're starting to send people to their regular polling places?
Yeah.
And then to another place on the same day. They are going to be confused as hell, quite frankly. I frankly think you're going to get less of a turnout for your referendum if you try to do it that way.
So what's your proposal?
My proposal originally is to use two polling places on a separate day.
Well, what did you do for Woody Kaplan? Let's go with that, because I wasn't around for that.
Woody Kaplan was in the middle of the summer. There was no other election going on. We could use schools. We could do anything. We had three locations, okay? We had, I believe it was Yalesville, Senior Center, and it may have been either Stevens or Dag. I don't even recall it off the top of my head at this point.
All right. So could we have three stations also?
You could, but I'm -- if I don't have a spare machine?
No, I meant not -- if we're not doing it the same day, I'm assuming.
No. I have to keep -- see, once I run that election, I have to seal those machines until the Secretary of State tells me I can unseal them. That usually takes at least two to three weeks. So I think you're over the time limit at that point for having the -- by -- according to the charter. I think the statute allows you that, but --
You have it within 60 days?
Within 60 days.
So could we have it the week before, November 1? And this way, our machines don't have to be sealed?
Yeah, they do.
Our machines have to be sealed for three weeks also?
They have to be sealed for a period of time until it's -- they're cleared. I'm also going to be dealing with -- on the regular election, you're going to have either an audit. We always have had an audit, so -- and potentially, especially the only time we've done it with a local election is with a local election, rather, is a recount. The recount means that somebody of the nine people came within one and a half -- one half of 1% of the next person. Then all of the votes have to be counted. That has to happen within, like, seven days. The problem that we were running into here is if you do it within that timeframe, school's in session. The only time school's not in session is November 7th and 8th.
7th and 8th because of the teachers' workshops.
That's when the students aren't there.
Students aren't there.
All right. No, I mean --
No, I'm looking for some -- I don't have any solutions. I'm looking for suggestions. I got some suggestions, so.
Are there -- do you have some?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chet, you were asked what your plan is, and I don't think you totally got the plan out.
Well, you have to set a date for when it is.
And then once the date is established?
Once the date is set, then I can go one way or another, but I --
What are you recommending as far as?
I recommend that you do it after the election.
Okay. And how many polling places, based upon what?
I want to -- either one or two.
And are there particular polling places that you would recommend?
Yes.
And what are those?
I would recommend Senior Center as the first one, if we have one. And second, if we have to have two, I would recommend the Lyman Hall Voag Community Room, which would not interfere with any classes or whatever.
And what hours would you recommend?
Well, state statute, and the cheapest way to do it is to -- state statute recommends that you run it from 12 to 8:00 p.m. That's the minimum.
But what do you recommend?
I would like to see that no more than 10. And there's a reason for that, is because the election carts all go out for the standard local election. They're all loaded for a regular election. Public Works Department brings those all back on the next day, which would be the 9th. That means that I have to turn those around, empty them all out, get the machines out of them that are sealed, get the ballots out of them, and seal those. I also then have to restock and reset up one, two, or three, however you gentlemen decide, carts to go back out. Usually, it takes me four days to set up nine.
So these machines that would be used for the referendum are some of the same machines that would be used for the municipal?
Well, same carts that have all of the equipment necessary for an election in it.
Okay. But Jenna?
I would have to take that tabulator out and put a new tabulator for a referendum in that. Then they have to be brought out to the whatever polling places. I am saying that it's very, very tight because they're not coming back till sometime on Wednesday, and then I have to turn them around to get them ready for Friday morning, which may or may not be possible.
Is it possible to possibly borrow a unit from a different municipality?
No.
Okay. And what hours? I know the 12 days, the recommendation.
I've even looked at renting them, and they won't commit to renting them for a referendum because they probably -- anything that they have is going to be rented for the election.
And do you have a recommendation to this body as far as the hours of the referendum?
My initial rest is follow the law.
Well, it's the minimum. It's 12 to 8.
12 in the morning, or 12 noon until 8:00 p.m.
Wouldn't that increase the amount of people that you'd have to mail to?
No, does not. Not at all. I still have to send to every household that has a registered voter in it, and that's about roughly 16,300 to 400.
So somebody who votes at the Senior Center regularly, what would be the purpose of sending them a mailing other than to advertise the referendum?
Just for that point, that there is a referendum.
Just to let them know.
Because not everybody reads the newspaper. Not everybody reads -- looks at our website. Not everybody listens to the radio that something's going to cover that.
So it would be the intent to contact every registered voter in the town of Wallingford via certified mail, or first-class mail, letting them know of this referendum?
Postcard.
Postcard mail.
Yeah, okay.
And I have the figures down there for that, that I've -- that postcard would probably cost around $3,300. That's with variable data addressing, using the town permit number on the postcard. Postage, I think somewhere around $4,000 if you take that number times 24 cents. I think we may be able to save there. The numbers that you're seeing on that sheet there, the only thing -- you know, I worked on this today. Believe me, it's swagging, if you know what swagging is. Scientific wild-ass guess.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
How about the possibility of using the two high schools?
Well, the two high schools, first of all, Lyman Hall, yes. I think that that's going to cost us around some extra money to get the phone lines in there, which I have included in this budget. Sheen will cost a lot more to put the phone line in it. That's going to cost an extra $2,000.
Why?
Because the phone line, in order to conform with code, has to be in a shielded cable to go through the airplenum sealants. It has to conform with code, and an electrician has to do that, so they run from the box where all of the phone lines come in to the location where the election will be held. And they have -- however far that is, that distance I am envisioning is very, very long.
Oh, I mean, the cafeteria.
You can't use the cafeterias.
Why?
Because the school's in session.
No, they're not -- oh, you're not on that -- oh, you're saying -- okay, I thought you were going to --
Not on Election Day.
No, I thought you were going to do it on Monday, the 7th.
As I'm saying, I think you're going to confuse the voters, Al, if you try to do it on the same day as Election Day.
No, I'm saying Monday, the 7th.
Monday, the 7th, or the day before?
Yeah.
You're not giving me any time at all. I need time to get things prepared for one, and I don't have that many carts. I only have nine carts for nine polling places.
So your proposal date is the 14th. Is that correct?
That's -- yeah, that gives me some time to swap everything out.
It's only five more days.
All right. Let's get some of the public Nick input. Go ahead.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Couple of questions, well, a couple of statements. One is, I've been in contact with Secretary of State's office numerous times. Been fully aware for -- since we started this, what the timeline was. But the deal is that many communities around the state hold two elections on the same day because in certain communities, referendum, or they call it referenda, they allow non-voters, non-residents, but actual property owners to vote on budgetary issues. And I think Mr. Miller would agree with that, that that's allowed in certain communities. So what they do is they set up two polling places in the same building the same day, and that's all we're asking to be done here.
Well, that's what -- Councilor Akonopolis mentioned that already.
But you're keeping -- but they're saying it's going to be confusing, but it's done all over the state.
Well, not all over.
Can I answer that?
Yes, please do.
It is generally done, but that's usually in the very small communities where there is only one polling place anyway.
It's not the way that the state conveyed it to me. We don't need -- the machine issue, we don't need machines. The state said you can use paper ballots. You can use -- again, defer to Mr. Miller.
Is that true, Mr. Miller? And you use paper ballots?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Nick, please, let's --
I'm just -- I need to know.
Mr. Gross has the floor.
All right. Can we just have for open?
We're going to -- no, we're going to go just the way we always do.
Okay, then, ask your question.
Through the chair to register our voters. Can our paper ballots allowed by the state of Connecticut? Can we use paper ballots?
Yes, we can.
Okay. But go ahead.
So, I mean, so there is two of the roadblocks that were set. Now, do we --
Oh, wait a minute.
No, no, I'm just -- but you were shooting them down.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Next thing is the -- do we still control, or do we still have the old voting machines that the town used before we went to the paper ballots?
Nick, please, let's --
I'm just -- I need to know.
Mr. Gross has the floor.
All right. Can we just have for open?
We're going to -- no, we're going to go just the way we always do.
Okay, then, ask your question.
Through the chair to register our voters. Can our paper ballots allowed by the state of Connecticut? Can we use paper ballots?
Yes, we can.
Okay. But go ahead.
So, I mean, so there is two of the roadblocks that were set. Now, do we --
Oh, wait a minute.
No, no, I'm just -- but you were shooting them down.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Next thing is the -- do we still control, or do we still have the old voting machines that the town used before we went to the paper ballots?
I don't have them. I've turned them back to the town. I do not have them.
Okay. But what I'm saying is there's other machines available so we can do everything on November 8. We shouldn't let that be because as we were talking, as the council was talking about that, as Mr. Sullivan said, that he only had a small representation of voters that particular day. Well, I think on November 8, you'll have a vigor selection of voters, and the actual people will be going to vote that particular day. And if you allow them to vote in a democracy, that's all you can ask, win or lose. And I don't like to hear that it's going to cost this amount of money or that amount of money, because that is what we have in America. We are a democracy, and if we're going to go to vote, whether it's going to cost $100 or $200, that shouldn't be a restriction on people of being allowed to vote and convey their opinions on a particular issue.
Hold on a minute. Let me respond to that. There is no restriction. We're not saying people can't vote if we say it. His recommendation is a way to cast the vote. See, that's far different from what you're saying.
Right. And also --
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Some history here. 12 to 8. This was originally when Woody Kaplan was going to be done. If you'll remember, that's how it was originally going to be done. One polling place, 12 to 8. Mr. Brodinsky, at that point, got us three polling places. And if you'll remember on that particular day, because I remember being at Stevens School at 4:00 in the afternoon, you couldn't park in Stevens School at 4:00 in the afternoon. They were lined to vote. Remember, there were 7,100 voters that came out on that day to three polling places. Now, in a general election, you're going to hope that you're going to see 12,000 to 14,000 in nine polling places. So you -- what I'm thinking is what you're doing is if you're going to polling places, and if the numbers come out to what they came in Woody Kaplan, you're going to have lines. People are going to be turned -- people are going to turn around if they can't -- we're talking about parking here. People will turn around if they can't park their car at Stevens School or whatever particular polling place you're using. So I think that you're putting a cap on it. We should open it up to November 8. Yes, you -- Mr. Parisi, you're saying you can't, but you can.
No, you can't.
You can, Mr. Parisi.
He said with paper ballots.
Pardon?
Ask the town attorney.
He's talking about paper ballots.
Yeah, we can go to paper ballots. I didn't know we could. I asked Mr. Miller, and he said we had machines.
That's the way it's supposed to be done.
But it's legal to do paper ballots?
Yeah. Well, the machine counts the paper ballots.
All right. So can we -- let's go back to my original question, then. Can we hold the election on November 8, which is my motion, using paper ballots?
That -- there's got to be a little bit more specific than that.
All right. I'm asking you the --
At the same polling place?
Yes, at the same polling place, 75 feet away.
I don't see how.
Why?
Because I have to set up with a -- the same staffing that I have in the regular election. It's economically --
How many people do you use to run your election normally?
There would be one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, but 10 at every polling place I'd need.
10 at each polling place is what you use?
Yeah. I usually use more, but for the referendum, only one question, I would use less, and that's 10. I would usually -- for the normal election, I use more than that.
All right. So 10 is what you would use for a normal ballot for the normal election?
Right.
And how many would you have to add on for the 75-feet-away deal, paper ballots?
No, that's what I'm saying I would need is 10.
All right. So you would need 20, then?
No, I -- you're asking me how many I need for the referendum?
No, I need to know.
I'm telling you 10.
I need to know if we add a paper ballot, instead of using how many, how many? Give me the number without -- with the normal election at, let's say, one polling place, and then how many more would you need with the second election, 75 feet away, using a paper ballot, sir?
Well, at the 75-foot away, as you're putting it for the referendum, I need at least 10 persons at every polling place. That's 90 people.
Extra.
We didn't have 10 people.
I know, but I'm saying extra, you're saying.
Extra.
So instead of 20 at one place, you would need -- I mean, instead of 10 at one place, you would need 20?
Right. Actually, the other --
To run both elections at -- on that day.
Yeah, and I don't have phone lines at that -- out that 75. I don't have that phone, which I'm required by law to have.
All right. You have the microphone.
I'm very confused on 10 people per location, because I've been involved in a few elections. I don't remember seeing 10 in a room at one time between checkers and the people working the -- you know, because if it's a paper ballot, it's not like they're queuing up to a machine. So you're not going to have machines there where each one's going to be attended by an attendant.
You have to have a ballot box or something.
I understand. One ballot box.
It has to be one person there.
Right.
You have to have a ballot clerk to hand out the ballot. You have to have an official checker. You have to have a moderator. You have to have two assistant registrars and to at least one or two extra people to handle, control, and do relief work.
Okay. Well, if you have two extra people, we're down to eight now for polling place. No, Mr. Parisi, I see you're exasperated, but --
No. You know, I am exasperated because this gentleman is the town's designated person. He is the registrar of voters. That's why I -- that's why I'm getting a little bit, because he's, if you will, our expert. And I think he knows what he has to do.
You -- Mr. Zandry, I'm going to defer time to Mr. Zandry.
Mr. Zandry.
Mr. Zandry, nine balls from his circle. You know, and I'm not saying anything against him being a registrar, but you know, you're saying he's our expert? Well, then, why didn't he explain everything? Why didn't he explain that you could have paper ballots? Answer me that way.
Because I don't think he approves --
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute. You want an answer?
No, yeah, I want an answer.
Okay. Then let me answer.
Okay.
I think he said he didn't approve of that process. I, I think he said he didn't approve of that process.
Well, whether he approved it or not, you have to make the decision.
And we'll vote on it if we can get it.
You should know what your options are. And that's his responsibility, to tell you what your options are, and then you make the decision.
Mr. Zandry, when I was asked that question, can we use paper ballots, I answered, yes.
My point is, that that should have been explained up front. We shouldn't have had to bring it up. That's my point.
I would have, I would have believed it wasn't allowed. I would, you led me to believe it wasn't allowed. You said, I have to seal the machines, and I said, wow, okay. I thought we needed machines for both rooms, and the both machines would be sealed, all right.
You do, to do it right, you do.
All right, but now you told me you can use paper ballots, and what would you do?
Well, the, the machines use a paper ballot, too.
So, you would seal that?
Yes.
No?
The ballot, after the ballots thing, the ballots are all sealed, yes.
So, you put the ballots in the ballot box, and then you seal the box?
Yes. They would then have to be counted.
I, I understand, but, but I just get the feeling, I just get the feeling that your plan here on paper was discussed already with some of the members up here, and they, they weren't even for the referendum.
It was discussed with my counterpart, Sam Carmody, who unfortunately could not be here, because he just had surgery. I did discuss it with him, and we've been going over this, and how we would ru- ru- run the, the referendum, and what's the best way to do it. And we looked at Wooding Kaplan as a example, and said, you know, don't try to do it in a referendum in every polling place, because that's too inefficient, too costly. So, what we wanted to do was utilize our equipment to make it most efficient, and be able to garner the results as quickly as possible by running them through the machines, because it counts it, at the end of the poll, you close it, you have a result.
All right, so, Mr. Miller-
Now, otherwise, I have to-
What can we do? What can we do to help you to get more people to man that second station using a paper ballot? Can we help you recruit people?
First of all, it's not people.
Okay.
That the first thing you gotta do is get me phone lines in a acceptable space that the, uh, that the school will allow me to use.
Well, the school's not in session that day.
Right, but I have to have-
But, I mean, there's tons of telephones in the, in the school. Every school has a phone in every, there's a phone in every wing, sometimes in every classroom. Now, the high schools have phone, I could call out of my, every classroom at Lyman Hall can be called out with a phone, with a line, a live phone line and a phone number. So, now, is that, that's, I'm sure that's the way it is at Sheen, too. Now, I don't even know about the junior highs. I don't think the telephone line-
Have you looked at the space that a polling place takes up?
No, I know, but there's, like you just said, the Vo-Ag place at Lyman Hall, that's perfectly fine.
Yes.
Is that what you're using on the day of the normal election?
I'm not using that.
All right, what do you, okay, so, if you were to have your elections in the gym, then the seventy-five feet away is a cafeteria. Gyms and cafeteria are very unbelievably close to each other,
Correct.
But they're seventy-five feet away from each other, because if they, they have to be.
No.
Well, I mean-
Rock Hill, take a look at Rock Hill, they're right, right up against one another. And other schools are that same way in the elementary levels.
So, at Rock Hill, you'd have to go down and use another room? That's all, a classroom?
I'd have to find another large space to set up my tables for my checkers, my ballot clerks, my handicapped, uh, stations, and-
Well, if they get into the normal ballot, if they get into the normal polling place, they should be able to, you know, I mean, handicaps should be able to move to another place that's handicapped.
I have to have the same space to set it up, that I have in the cafeteria or in the gymnasium. Classroom is just not large enough to do that. I have to have, there's a minimum amount of, based on the amount of registered voters in there, I have to have one of these booths for every two-hundred-and-fifty eligible voters.
I, I vote at Rock Hill School, and it's, it's not a very big room that we vote in.
It's cafeteria.
Yeah, I mean, that's not big. I mean, the gym, the gym is not next door to it.
Yes, it is. You go right next door to it, it's the gym in the state.
All right, so, and if the door is closed, and you use a separate entrance, seventy-five feet away, you couldn't have another polling station?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to the secretary of state.
You could, because-
But I think that they're gonna say it's too close, because the walls abut to one another.
All right, okay, back again. Mr. Miller, again, talked about too costly. I'm gonna make a suggestion. If we have it on November eighth, and Mr. Miller can help me on this, if it's, the referenda is on the same day, do you need to mail out cards to the people, because their polling places stay the same? Is, wouldn't it just be needed to have the legal notice in the paper that you would be required to for any election?
It's never been done that way in the, in this town. Every time you change something for a, any kind of referendum or election, the, the, the town has properly, I believe, notified every voter of that change. And I think that that is only appropriate for this also, to say, however you do it, you can't do it in the same polling place. So, however you do it, you have to notify the, the voter that now you are going to be voting in this room for this, and then you have to go to that room for the referendum.
But that's, that's happened before, where there's been, you've moved poll, in this, within a school, you can move, if you're new to town, you don't know where the polling place is, you go there, and you know you're going to DAG, you're going to your Lyman Hall, whatever the school is. Because, from my understanding, you only need to, um, notify voters, and I like how you said that, you need to notify every voter, because that's the right way to do it, not households.
Well, household-
But you said voter, but I, I, I-
Well, yeah, but by going to the household, wherever there is a voter, you go to the, send a notice to that house. In, inevitably, you, that message gets into that house to all the voters. That's the way it has been done in the past.
No, Wooding Kaplan was every registered voter. But that's, and it was.
Let me, uh-
Contrary to the, to the instructions of the council.
But is it-
Wait a, wait a minute, please. Now, let's be, you know, let's stay civil about this, all right? I mean, let's calm down, let's calm down.
I think I'm being very civil, Mr. Preisi.
Let them answer.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Chuck, you had something you're trying to say.
No, I'm just saying that, that the, that it was, that notice was sent out to every individual voter, uh, contrary to the instructions of the council.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
As a referendum supporter, I, I wanna ask you this question. Would we be breaking the law if we fail to send every voter the, the postcard announcing the referendum vote, and just put a legal notice in the newspaper? Would we be breaking the law?
No, but you're not gonna reach very many of them.
That's fine, that's fine. Well, we're, I'm willing to accept that as one of the referendum, uh, and I, we can ask Mr. Fishbein if he is, too, because we're the only two that supported that, so-
As long as it's the eighth.
Yeah, on the same day, I'm saying, Mr. Miller. So, that's what I would like to see us try to do.
There, there's eight thousand of your dollars back.
And what would we save in mailing costs?
Approximately seven, seventy-three hundred dollars.
So, that seems good.
That'll be, that'll be eaten up probably at least by payroll.
Well, payroll, you would have to do, you would have to do-
Then the phone, I, I have to check on the phone lines, whether they're, they're accessible or not.
You know, it's give and take, so it's good.
I don't even know if they're, you know-
But again, we're, what we're doing is, you, you feel good about it, that you're gonna be doing it on the same day. I know you must feel good about that.
Not really.
You don't?
No.
Can't hear them.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I, I call the question. Let's just get this over.
Well-
Motion, uh-
Just a couple of quick questions for the registr-
Motion has been made.
Yes.
I think it overrides, doesn't it? Motion to-
And it was seconded.
Call the question?
Do you really wanna shut down public question during a referenda?
Well, I mean, it'll have to be voted, that's right. That's what I'm saying.
Shut it down.
Right. Okay. That's all I'm saying. Motion's made.
Do you really, it's, it's the motion to shut down the public from speaking?
Motion's made and seconded. Wait, call the question.
Is, is a call actually a motion? A call is just a call.
Yes, it is.
No, it's just a call.
No, it's a motion, and I think it takes precedent.
No, I understand that would be, I just, that, thought it didn't require a vote. You call the question, you just call the question.
Doesn't require a vote?
No. No, parliamentary, if, if someone calls the question, you're done, you have to vote.
Okay. So, so-
There's a limit to what kinda questions can be called, but-
So essentially, the public's being shut down on asking questions?
No, I know, I know that part, but I mean-
So essentially, the public's being shut down on asking a few more questions?
I think what it is, is that there's been, evidently, someone feels there's been extensive discussion, and they wanna call the question.
What's the question?
The question is the motion.
All right, then, could we, a couple of quick questions, then? Real quick, the phone line. Mr. Miller has stated that it needs a phone line in every room. Does it need to be landline?
No, it doesn't. It can be a cell phone, uh, but I've found them to be not very reliable inside the schools.
Well, we could have that tested before, and I'm sure-
All right. What's your other question?
All right. Well, I think that, just a synopsis, then. So, we can have the election on November eighth, we can use paper ballots, we can use a cell phone, we can save the seventy-three hundred or more dollars by not mailing out a mailer that day to the public. This the most democratic way to allow the voters to go, because they're gonna be there that particular day. The council spoke, they want it to be a democratic process, to let the public speak. I can't see how you cannot allow it to have it on November eighth, and let the public have their will, and the rights of the public will not be infringed upon by moving it to a day for eight hours in one or two polling places, when you know that there's gonna be an outpouring of support for this. And that's all you're trying to do, so hopefully, November eighth. And one last thing, that, and this, this is, we're gonna move it forward, so it's all-
All right, come on.
Again, one person should not be voting up there, and I hope that he will see not to vote on this particular motion. And if they want some guidance, I, I'll come to the side and explain who it should be. But there shouldn't be a vote.
No, don't, 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 just, don't cause problems.
Well, I don't know who he's talking about.
Can I, can I just, Chuck, Mr. Miller, do we have nine backup moderators?
Certified, no.
So, we don't have enough moderators?
The question has been called.
I know, and we went on and on and on.
He had, you had your two questions. I think that's been very fair.
All right, so, may I ask why, may I ask, what do you have to be, what do you have to do to become a certified moderator, Mr. Fishbein?
You need to attend the class and pass a test.
And do you, are you gonna be having those classes for your moderators?
No, it's my, like, currently, I'm all, all my people are certified.
So, you have nine certified ma-
I have nine certified.
Total, that's what you have?
I think there's ten.
Ten, so, you don't have any backups if anybody gets sick or anything?